Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our board meeting. It's always a pleasure to see family and friends support the people we love and cherish in the Grange Park, and that's our officers. And we're looking forward to a great reception tonight. And thank you for the family for supporting the officers. They do a great job for us. We're blessed to have them. So could we all rise for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge the allegiance to the pride of the United States of America. It is truly repugnant for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice alone.
Amanda, will you call the roll?
Trustee Massick?
Here.
Trustee Raco?
Here.
Trustee Sheehan?
Here.
Trustee Casera?
Here.
Trustee Lotner?
Here.
Trustee Zora?
Here.
President DiCipio?
Here.
Coram is present.
Thank you, Amanda. Next on the agenda is what we've all been waiting for. Presentation to Commander Tim Contoy and Deputy Chief John Strezko. Chief, will you do the honors, please?
I stand up here today as the chief who couldn't be more proud. I've had the opportunity to say that a few times. One of the biggest girls in my life from my childhood, of course, being married and the love of my life, and then being able to have the opportunity here. And what I mean by that sincerely in my heart is through the administration side that I work with, the great village board we have, the great village we work for today. We're really blessed and lucky to be up here and be able to say what I have to say. But there's two gentlemen today that I couldn't be more proud to be able to give recognition to because they've worked 17 and a half years since 1999, 15-plus years since 2002, to be where they're going to be today. And me being where I'm at today and being given the opportunity for our positive growth in our department, today is another step in that direction. So, without further ado, because this is what you guys are here to see, is these two individuals. First thing I will say is I'll start with Tim Contoy because it goes in a certain segue of positionary. Tim is our operations commander. He will, he's taken that role as of Monday, the 21st. As I stated, he's been with us since March of 2002. He was the Officer of the Year through the Lions Club, through LaGrange Park and Workfield in 2008. He served as an officer, a detective, an OIC, a sergeant, and now he'll be the commander. He will be attending the prestigious School of Northwestern Staff and Command, and that will be happening in September through January, and he'll be doing that on the chief scholarship. So there'll be no expense to this village for that $5-plus thousand dollar class. And he's going to go through that and make us proud as well at the end. So, without further ado, I'd like to bring up Mr. Tim Contoy. So next up, and I'll be bringing both of them up, and then I'll let some have the floor and introduce the family that's here with them, and then I'll say a few words, a few other words, I should say, is my new deputy chief. He will be my right hand. I'm proud of both of them. So John is the Officer of the Year since 2003. Him and Tim have worked hard again, as I said, to get where they're at. This is about John from this end. He was the Adopt a Cop camp coordinator, took that role seriously, had 30 to 40 kids each year in that while we had it throughout the summer camp, and did a tremendous job adding to our camp. He took that role and made that program what it was. He was an officer, he was an OIC, he was a sergeant, he is a commander, and now he'll be my right hand as a deputy chief. He will oversee this entire operations unit above Tim, and they'll work together to make us that much stronger. John is a graduate of Police Staff in Command back in 2014. So without further ado, I'd like John Strezko to come up, and I'd like to let you know that these two will be our administrative team, all three of us, for the police department moving forward. The floor is yours, Tom.
I'd like to thank the village board for your support through all this. The village administrators, thank you as well. I'd like to introduce my parents, my mom and dad, Keith and Mary Ellen, my wife Amy, and my eight-year-old daughter Gabby. And then I'd like to thank the staff for being here. Things are going to be good. Thanks again. I look forward to working with each one of you. Deputy Chief, congratulations to you. I look forward to working with you as well.
Board, DiCipio, President DiCipio, Julia, everybody else in the administration, Ed. If it weren't for Ed, I wouldn't be here right now. So I owe him a huge thanks as well. One who saw something in me that other people had not. So here with me today are my beautiful, wonderful, strong sisters, my sister Candy, my sister Wendy. I guess I'll say something nice. My two boys, they are wonderful. We joke a lot, but they are my everything. And then Michelle is here as well, their mom, that she's here, able to support me as well, too, which is very nice. But my boys, my sisters, my family are everything to me, and they are what keep me going every day and the reason I have the pride that I do for this job and this profession and this village. I want them to be proud of me. Thank you to everybody who came, my teammates, my family, my second family, even though Jackie might not say we're family, but they put up with me every day, and they are great and wonderful people and coworkers, and I do think of them as mine.
I will end this thought by a few things. Again, and it sounds reiterated, but I mean it. Thank you to all for coming. Today also, I'd like to introduce our new secretary that's been with us since August 9th, Shelley Johnson. She's got plenty of years of experience as coming into that position and is going to help us as well. Our LTAC director is here hiding in the corner, and I'm proud that she made it. Not to highlight Shelley, but tomorrow's her birthday. The last thing I will say is we have a new cadet here, probationary officer Tim Burry. So our team is here, but Tim is in the academy, and I'm getting rave reviews on who he is. He's the small gentleman in the back. The last thing I'd like to say is a few things that haven't been done. I don't think too much, and it probably should be done a little bit more, but today I stand in front of you with a job well done. Person that's in this audience did this job well. Friday evening, August 18th, around 11:30 at night, Sergeant Morocco was doing his nothing is routine patrol for business checks. On that time, he came upon an armed robbery in progress at our 7-Eleven. Sergeant Morocco kept his cool, collective manner, was able to get things corralled the correct way. As those suspects left the actual 7-Eleven, he was able to apprehend one, and unfortunately, the other is still something that we're investigating. But I will say, because of his keen awareness and because of him being on the street and the person he's become today, he made that single-handed situation go from a very high-end situation to a very controlled manner very quickly. No injury to the suspect, no injury to any of the officers, and accountability was held. Fran, thank you. So, last thing I'll say, and this has to go with the fire department, has to go with us, it has to go with everything. But August 10th, and individuals in this room were involved with that, too, and they also assisted in that night. Some are not here, but they played a big part in a fire that happened with a passerby alerting our staff. Without that passerby alert, it could have been a lot worse. We were able to get over to around the corner block of the Grange Road and save at least five people's lives that night from a fire that could have ended their lives. And because of the due diligence of my staff on that midnight shift, they were able to save those people, get them out of that house. The fire department was able to come and do a job and save a lot of things to that house with a little minor damage to the back of our home. Specifically how bad it could have been, everything ended the way it should have, with no injuries to anyone. So again, I applaud the PD staff that did that job. I applaud the FD for saving that home, and I applaud the passerby who let us know all about it. So again, job's well done. Again, if you can't tell from talking from the heart, I couldn't be more proud to stand up here today. Thank you.
Congratulations, Deputy Chief. Congratulations, Detective.
I would just like to make a comment.
Congratulations.
Chief, you stated it very eloquently. We're very proud of our firefighters and our police officers, and what we're most grateful is that you represent our village and you protect us. You guys put your lives on the line every day for our residents, and you do it in an exemplary professional manner, and we are so grateful for all that you do for our village. While we're sleeping, you're out there protecting us. While we're awake or at work, you're protecting our homes and our community. You know, that's true honor that we have for you guys, that we respect you and love all that you do because without you, we don't know where we'd be, but our community is safe. We can walk the streets at night, feel safe, because you guys are out there protecting us, and it was evident by what Fran did and what the officers and firemen did with the situation on August 10th. You know, we go to our jobs every day. My job doesn't put me on the line, but yours does, and we're so grateful for that. So thank you, all of you. Now you can go eat. Did you go do something? Thank you all for coming, though.
Well, it's so nice to see their force come out and their families come out in support of what they do. Okay, moving on, we have public participation of agenda-related items. Would anyone care to address the board? Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Amanda?
The items on this evening's consent agenda are as follows. Approval of minutes, village board meeting July 25th, 2017. Village board executive session, July 25th, 2017. Work session meeting, August 8th, 2017. B, action, application for subdivision 341 and 345 Wyola. Motion to approve and ordinance approving final subdivision plat for 341 and 345 Wyola in LaGrange Park. C, action, motion to authorize the president and chairperson of the finance committee to sign the register for bills and authorize the treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of operating bills and salaries as itemized in the check registers. D, action, motion to authorize the village treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills become due between this date and September 26th with subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the Board of Trustees at its regular meeting to be held on September 26th, 2017.
Have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. Amanda, call the roll.
Trustee Massick?
Yes.
Trustee Raco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Amanda. Next up is our village manager, Julia.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have just one item to report on this evening. Included in the administration department's report, you will find an update for the 125th anniversary. There is one additional event that I wanted to make sure that you are aware of, and that is the burial of our time capsule. That particular event will take place on Friday, September 15th. The time for this event is not determined at this time, but as soon as we get that solidified, we'll make sure that we get that time out to the board as well as out to the public so that they can join in on that event. While we will be compiling information and data with current events and happenings for 2017, the information that will be included in the time capsule will one day become a part of our village's history. So we're looking forward to that event, we're looking forward to a great crowd, and are looking forward to everyone being there. And with that, I have nothing else to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Julia. Next, we have administration committee. Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I have a few items to report on, and one item for discussion and action. Firstly, items to report on to the community is, first of all, regarding the 125th anniversary community art project. This November, the 125th Anniversary Committee is planning on transforming a wall in the village hall into a piece of art. We are asking current and past residents to submit images of their families, whether it's in black or white photograph of your grandparents, a picture of a recent family outing, or a drawing your child made of you. We want it. Images may be submitted electronically online or brought into the village hall for staff to scan while you wait. Once you do submit your image, it will then be transposed onto a ceramic tile, which will be set in mortar on a wall in the village hall surrounded by mosaic pieces designed by local schools. The completed project will be unveiled on November 17th. For more information on the project, please visit our village website, www.lagrangepark.org, or call the village hall here at 708-354-0225. Second item to report on is regarding the Citizens Police Academy, and we encourage our residents to consider and hopefully register now. The second session of the LaGrange Park Citizens Police Academy will begin on September 14th and run through October 12th. Session two of this year will meet on Thursday evenings from 6:30 PM until 8:30 PM in the village hall boardroom. Space is limited, so please contact Officer Chris Dempsey at 708-352-7711 at extension 270 in order to register or to receive more information. Next item is to encourage the village to save the date. The village's annual community cleanup day will be held on Thursday, October 19th. Our residents will be permitted to dispose of an unlimited amount of refues, including yard waste and brush, for a total of just four refuse stickers. So take advantage of this great program. Community e-briefs. The village would like to also encourage our residents to stay in contact with the village and what's going on in LaGrange Park by signing up for community e-briefs, which is our weekly electronic newsletter that is emailed out each Friday. The village currently has over 2,100 subscribers, so we encourage you to add to the list. Residents may sign up for e-briefs by going to our homepage on the village's website, again at www.lagrangepark.org. And one item for discussion and action is regarding China Cat Productions LLC for consideration of a second lease amendment. And a little bit of background on this item is that on November 13th of 2012, our village board approved a lease with DRW Holdings, who does business as China Cat Productions LLC, to install two satellite dishes on the village's water tower, which is located at 937 Barnesdale Road, with a monthly lease rate of $2,000 and an annual 3% escalator. On October 22nd of 2013, the village board approved a first amendment to the lease to permit China Cat Productions to install two additional dishes on the village's water tower. The monthly lease rate was increased to $4,000. China Cat Productions recently notified the village that they are having difficulty operating their existing equipment on the tower, and they would like to install a fifth satellite dish. The dish would be added to the existing configuration, resulting in one mast with two mounted dishes and one mast with three mounted dishes. China Cat Productions has agreed to pay $2,000 in monthly rent for the additional dish, bringing the total monthly rate and rent for their equipment to $6,371, which represents $76,452 annually to our village. The proposed dish would be the same size as the existing dishes, which are 24 inches in diameter. The terms of the proposed second lease amendment are substantially similar to the first lease amendment approved by the village board in 2013. However, at the time of the writing of this memo and this commentary, the village attorney has not reviewed the proposed amendment. This review will occur prior to consideration of the amendment by the village board on August 22nd today. Approval of the attached ordinance should be subject to approval of the proposed amendment by the village attorney. As a side note, the village is continuing to negotiate with China Cat regarding installing an additional four satellite dishes on the village's water tower on the opposite side of the current equipment. Their request to install this fifth dish is to address an existing operational problem that they're having and is not related to their request for additional equipment to be located elsewhere on the tower. Documentation was included in our board packet. That included the ordinances and the proposed amendments for the addition of the additional dish. So I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance approving a second amendment to rooftop lease for 937 Barnesdale Road between China Cat Productions LLC and the village of LaGrange Park, subject to village attorney review.
Just to note, I've reviewed it already. You don't have to make it subject to my review.
Okay.
Thanks.
Should I amend the motion? I'd be happy to do that.
If you want to, yeah.
Okay. So, an amended, a motion would be, submit a motion to approve an ordinance approving a second amendment to rooftop lease for 937 Barnesdale Road between China Cat Productions LLC and the village of LaGrange Park.
I have a motion. Second, discussion. Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. It seems straightforward. I've taken a look at the proposed amendment as well. Seems to be in line with prior amendments and lease agreements, and considering that it's separate from the additional negotiations that are underway, I think it makes sense to include this as an amended item on the current lease and amendment.
Thank you, Trustee Lotner. Any other comments from the board? Trustee Raco?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm assuming it's already been figured out, but we're, it's weight-wise and safety-wise in terms of adding a fifth, we're good to go, right?
Yes, they did provide a load letter from their structural engineer that indicated that the tower can support that third dish, and they are required to obtain a building permit before they can actually put the dish up. So Hancock Engineering would review that letter as part of our standard review process.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions? So you've known Amanda call the roll.
Trustee Massick?
Yes.
Trustee Raco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Amanda.
And that concludes the items from the administration area this evening, and the one item for discussion and action.
Thank you, Trustee Lotner. If I may ask one question through the chair. Julia or Emily, is there, with the art project, is there a deadline or is it an ongoing submission?
It's not an ongoing submission. We previously had provided a couple deadlines to encourage people to submit, but at this point, we are continuing to accept submittals until the wall is filled.
Okay, and the 17th of November, when it's unveiled, what is the deadline of submitting so that gets included in that unveiling? Do we know? Or has it passed?
It has not passed. I think the way that it will be constructed would allow us to continue to add to the mosaic once it's installed, but I would suggest that people submit at least 30 days in advance if they want it to be part of that initial installation.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Lotner. Okay, moving on, building and zoning. Trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to report the building department activities for July 2017. There were 86 building permits issued in July compared to 104 last July. Permits issued year-to-date remain less as compared to this point last year. The village is at 518 permits being issued so far this calendar year compared to 568 last year. Estimated construction costs for the month were up to $300,000 or 23% higher than compared to last July. Permit fees through the month were slightly lower compared to July of last year. 150 inspections were conducted in July compared to 156 in July, in the previous July. On such, 16 were not approved. Year-to-date, 194 inspections have been conducted compared to 944 last year. On July 7th, the village issued the certificate of occupancy to the congregation of St. Joseph for the I building at the complex, where significant remodeling and renovations took place. Many staff offices and many residents moved back into the building. Additional phases will still be forthcoming over the next year, including the construction of a new tower and construction of the new two-story assisted living facility. Prior to and during the village's birthday party, Patrick and Chief Magos checked the park for various safety issues. July 6th marked, or July marked the six-month employment anniversary of our new building official deputy building commissioner, Patrick Boyle, and the initial six months, six months he has held this position. Patrick is doing a great job, and this position appears to be working out well in improving department operations in various ways. I'd also like to comment, Patrick has been doing a great job. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Engineering capital projects. Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I have three items to report on. On July 18th, 2017, sealed bids for the 2017 pavement patching program were received by the village and publicly opened. During the July 25th village board meeting, a contract was awarded to the low responsible bidder, Chicago Land Paving, Inc. The purpose of this work is to rehabilitate pavements that have some areas of distress but do not require complete resurfacing at this time. The second item, Davis Concrete, the contractor for the 2017 street paving program, West Section, has completed the replacement of curb, gutter, driveway, and sidewalk elements on the project. The first layer of asphalt has been placed, and they are adjusting sewer structure frames in advance of the installing of the final layer of asphalt. All paving work on this project should be completed by early August, with final restoration work to be done in September. Final item, K-5 Construction has also completed all concrete work on the 2017 street paving program, North Section. They have placed the initial layer of asphalt and are adjusting sewer structure frames prepared for the placement of the final layer of asphalt. All paving work on this project is expected to be done by early August, and landscape restoration work will be completed when weather conditions moderate in early fall. That concludes my report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. Public Safety Committee, Trustee Massick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will start with the police department summary of activities for July. Total crimes are almost the same as reported from last year during the same timeframe. A total of 151 incidents reported for the month of July 2017 compared to 138 last year. Total police activity is slightly higher than last year with 4,314 total incidents reported through July of this year compared to 4,150 through July of last. Traffic enforcement is slightly higher than last year with 3,663 total citations written through July of this year compared to 3,550 through last year. The police department held its annual crossing guard meeting on August 16th in anticipation of the 2017-18 school year. In addition, the patrol officers will again be involved with the Adopt a Cop program for grades K through 8 throughout all LaGrange Park schools. This program places an officer in each classroom to discuss a variety of safety topics once a month for continuation of positive community involvement. New probationary officer, Tim Burry Jr., has begun his basic training at Cook County Sheriff's Police Academy at Triton College. The academy will be held from Monday, August 7th until December 1st. He will then begin his 10-week FTO training with Officer Wilk. Tim is 24 years old, single, and resides in Chicago. He is a graduate of Western Illinois University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. We welcome Tim to the village and the police department family. And again, we would like to congratulate Deputy Chief John Strezko and Operations Commander Tim Contoy on their new administrative positions within the department. And just as someone who's been here for a long time, I've seen them grow through the department, and it all comes from the top, but we are very proud of this entire department and all they've achieved. Onto fire department activities for July. Fire rescue incidents for the month were 32. There were 277 year-to-date compared to 271 year-to-date in 2016. The final print of our new Quint ladder truck was received and reviewed with some minor modifications made. modifications made. As such, the vehicle should be now headed to production. Again, delivery is planned for December or January. Also of note is that the part, part of Made in America Week, the product on display from Wisconsin, was a Pierce Ascendant 107-foot ladder truck, the same overall model that we are purchasing. On July 4th, fire crews took part in Riverside, Brookfield, and Lyons Independence Day parades. And along with staff and officials from La Grange and Western Springs, we were presented with an oversized check by Congressman Lipinski for the regional assistance, the firefighter grants we received for new portable radios. Personnel were recognized by Ampkes this month, the manufacturer of the hydraulic rescue tools, for the great job they did at the vehicle crash on June 18th, especially in extricating the driver of the box truck. Although the recognition program is used somewhat as a marketing tool, it still provides recognition to those who were involved in the rescue, which was well-deserved. And during the 125th birthday party, staff provided public education materials, a couple of activities for children, a misting station, and EMS fire coverage of the event. And that concludes the fire department report. And now we do have one action item. It said the general background, it's for the authorization of, for sale of surplus equipment. In December of 2016, the village board authorized the purchase of a new advanced life support ambulance for the fire department. That new ambulance has not been built, or has now been built and delivered and will soon be placed in service. As such, the vehicle it is replacing, a 2,000 Freightliner MedTech ambulance, will be traded in. The vehicle currently has been driven for 100,258 miles. In order for the vehicle to be traded in, the village must formally consider the vehicle surplus property. This will be done by ordinance, which will also allow the village manager to authorize the trade-in. It should be noticed that we placed the, when, when we placed the order for the new ambulance, we were offered a trade-in value of $6,500 from Foster Coach Sales Incorporated, who is the vendor for the new ambulance. The trade-in value and offer from Foster Coach is still valid. Staff has also investigated the possibility of selling the vehicle instead of trading it and contacted two brokers who handle such sales. One broker stated he was not interested, and the other one who purchased the last ambulance we sold stated the vehicle would be hard to sell based upon mileage and verbally quoted an expected value for such of $4,500. So staff is recommending that the board declare the 2,000 Freightliner MedTech ambulance surplus and to authorize the village manager or designated trade-in such vehicle to Foster Coach Sales for a value of $6,500. So I'll now make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus property owned by the Village of La Grange Park, Illinois, and to authorize the village manager or designated trade-in such vehicle to Foster Coach Sales for a value of $6,500.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Trustee Messick?
It's all pretty straightforward, and this, this looks like the best value we'll get for it, and I'm fully for it.
Any other comments from the board? Seated on a man to call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes public safety report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Public Works Committee, Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. The following is a monthly report for July 2017. The sweeper spent 62 hours cleaning 160 miles of village streets and picked up 26 yards of debris. Brush pickup took place the first full week of August, July, I'm sorry, 84 and 1/2 day shift hours, making several passes through town, removing approximately 236 yards of brush from the parkways. Tree maintenance, trimming, and inspections were also improved during 24 and 1/2 regular hours. 24 and 1/2 day shift hours were spent repairing parkways from various jobs with dirt and grass seed. 73 and 1/2 regular hours were spent on the maintenance of public works, equipment, and vehicles. 107 hours were spent filling potholes and patching after water excavations, and approximately 18 tons of asphalt was used. 188 and 1/2 day shift hours were spent on building and ground maintenance around the public works facility, village hall, and along 31st Street, and also at Memorial Park for the village's 125th birthday party. Mulch was put down in planters along 31st Street, Poet's Corner, and the entrance to Sherwood Village. Barricades were put out for three block parties. Work orders were completed with crews removing roadkill, making sign repairs, and attending to resident concerns. Water department operations, over 347 day shift hours and 36 overtime man-hours during the month of July, were spent on maintenance and repairs of sewer and water mains. 33,520,000 gallons of water were purchased from the Brookfield-North Riverside Water Commission. 1,279 water meters were read in Section 1. 54 monthly accounts and 39 final meter readings were taken. Various inspections, appointments, and service calls were performed. Five water or sewer inspections, 15 meter appointments, and 19 service calls were performed. 15 water bacterial samples were taken. All samples passed. Stage-two quarterly samples were also taken. 139 utility locations were identified prior to excavations. Two water mains, 6-inch in diameter, were repaired. Four valve boxes were also repaired, Mr. President. And that concludes my report for July.
Thank you, Trustee Sheehan. Finance Committee, Trustee Rocco?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are 25% into our fiscal year, and the highlights are, our fiscal year-to-date, the general fund revenue is at 28% of the annual budget and $244,000 greater than last year. The increase is primarily due to the timing of property tax receipts. Sales tax and income tax revenue are about the same as this time last year, while telecommunication taxes are down by about 9%. Permit revenue is higher due primarily to new construction permits. Charges for services are up about $25,000 due to increased ambulance fee receipts. Fine revenue is lower than last year while slightly just below budget. Miscellaneous revenue is higher due to contributions associated with the village's annual anniversary celebration. Total general funded expenditures are within expectations at 22% of the annual budget and about $257,000 above last year. Most of the increase is due to the new LTAC annual contribution, which is paid on a quarterly basis beginning in May from the police and fire budgets. That concludes my report, and there are no action items, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Rocco. Commercial Revitalization Committee, Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening I have one item to report on, which is also up for discussion and action. As a general background, prior to purchasing 1015 and 1017 East 31st Street, restaurateur Jason Kornick notified the village that existing site conditions require the construction of a new water service line and reconstruction of an existing sewer line. As such, Mr. Kornick advised the village staff that he will need financial assistance from the village in order for the project to proceed. The proposed infrastructure improvements are eligible costs under both TIF and Business Development Districts. At the April 25th, 2017 board meeting, the village board confirmed its support in incentivizing the projects using TIF and/or Business Development District dollars and approved an inducement resolution acknowledging the village's conceptual approval of the proposed project where any financial assistance is contingent upon the village approving and executing redevelopment agreement. The resolution did not commit the village to any specific dollar amount, rather it simply committed the village to negotiate a redevelopment agreement in good faith. Mr. Kornick recently closed on the purchase of the properties and is asking that the village board consider a request for the village to construct a new 6-inch water main and a new sewer main in the alley from connection on Newberry to his restaurant. The main would be located in the public right-of-way and would be the property and asset of the village. These main lines would provide service to a location in back of the restaurant where the restaurant would connect newly constructed service lines that would accommodate the use and the sprinkler system requirement. Should the village board desire for the village to construct the new infrastructure, there were two options to be considered. Option one was an extension of water and sewer from Newberry Avenue west to the middle, west to the middle of Mr. Kornick's property. Preliminary cost estimate of $55,000, $17,000 for sewer, $27,000 for water, and $11,000 in contingency. This is for the public portion of infrastructure only, not laterals to the building. No IEPA permit would be required for water by the standards considered a service line. MWRD permit would be required for sewer, which would have a four-to-six week processing time. The project would need to be competitively bid. These lines could provide service to connections at the proposed restaurant address as well as the Perco building. They would terminate at approximately the center of the rear property line of the proposed restaurant. This incentive would be included in the redevelopment agreement. The second option is an extension of water and sewer from Newberry Avenue west to Beach Avenue. Preliminary cost estimate equals $156,000. $80,000 for water, $76,000 for sewer. This is for public portion of infrastructure only, not laterals to the building. There is a cost savings by doing full extension at one time to benefit future business on the strip that requires sprinkler systems. This option is ideal such that it maximizes the public benefit of the improvement. The solution would avoid future construction and disturbance to the area, allows for loop water service, requires IEPA permit for water, approximate eight-week processing time, and requires MWRD permit for sewer, again approximately four to six weeks processing time. The project would need to be competitive bid. In early August, village staff, special TIF BDD consul, the village attorney, and the village engineer met with Mr. Kornick, his attorney, and architect. At the meeting, both parties discussed a request for new village water sewer infrastructure as well as Mr. Kornick's intent on making an additional request of TIF Business Development District funds to offset the costs of construction. Since that time, Mr. Kornick submitted the TIF and BDD preliminary application and a pro forma financial analysis, and the village is working to negotiate the terms of redevelopment agreement. Funding for the village to complete either of the water and sewer improvement options above would come from revenues generated by the 31st Street, Barnesdale, TIF, and Business Development District funds. As it is expected to take up to three years to generate the revenue required for either option, it will be necessary to utilize general fund cash reserves, which would be reimbursed as sales and property receipts are collected. It is important to note that these revenue projections are not dependent on the addition of the new restaurant. Motion in action requested, the village board discussed both options at the August 8th work session meeting. Generally speaking, and upon preliminary view, the village board as a whole identified option two as a preferable option as it provided the greatest benefit for both public and business economic development in the area and in terms of optimal infrastructure connectivity. I have a motion to direct staff to proceed with preparation work, requisite permits, preparation of detailed cost estimates, design work, and bid preparation towards constructing a new water and sewer main in the alley of North 31st Street from Newberry to Beach, where the Newberry to 1015 East 31st Street portion of the extension will be included as part of a future TIF Business Development District redevelopment agreement with Kornick, with Mr. Kornick.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion, Trustee, Trustee Zora?
Yes, I need to recuse myself, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we had some great discussion at the August 8th meeting. When we started along the TIF BD, Business Development District Avenue a few years ago, I think we made it quite clear, and I think our village residents made it quite clear that we're looking to make sure infrastructure, both in our residential and business, business districts, are available to entice businesses coming in such as Mr. Kornick's. Looking at the, at the option, option two, I think we all were in agreement, is the best way to go as it would improve the entire business district. Any future businesses looking to come in, whether they be restaurants or other larger businesses, would have the infrastructure in place for fire and safety with sprinkler systems. It's a, it's a great opportunity for the, for the village, for the business district, and for the residents to move forward with, I think what we want to accomplish is a board, and that's business development. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. Comments from the board? Trustee Laudner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also think this is a great movement toward what we've been talking about for a long time, that, that's for sure, and getting the infrastructure in place to be able to hopefully entice new business growth and development. A clarification, though, that I do want to make, and I, obviously, it's pretty straightforward what it says in the discussion area, that it's important to note that the revenue projections are not dependent on the addition of the new restaurant. So to make sure I understand, that means that in the unlikely event that things don't work out for Jason, which we all anticipate they will, there's no impact on recovery of the expenses that we're, that we're incurring here. The TIF BDD funds that are projected from that area will cover all the option two expenses to the village regardless of the outcome of, of the new restaurant, which we all hope will be very successful. But just to clarify that.
Yes, Julia?
That is correct. The projections are based on the businesses that are currently there, which were considered in S.B. Friedman's projections and estimates for that particular district, whether it be the Business Development District or the TIF District.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a comment, this is, this is what we approved and what the residents approved and supported. TIF and BDD district funds are for, this is the, this is the beginning of the redevelopment. And, and to support option two, I mean, it's right in the third bullet point is, is the most clear thing to me, and this option is ideal in such that it maximizes the public benefit, you know, of the improvement for all. So I fully support this and option two.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Trustee Rocco?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also support option two. I know we went into discussion with this at the work session, and I think we all are in agreement that it's, you know, better to be, we want to be smart about the way we spend our money, and that even though we're putting more money up front, and it benefits all the businesses along that, in that strip. So for future, if they need sprinkler systems, we're not going back in and digging up something that we already dug up to, to improve it. So it only makes sense, and the whole idea is for us to invest in our community, and that's why we did this, TIF, is so that, and this is a perfect example of where we should be putting that investment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Rocco. Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's exciting to see this all starting to fall into place, and I wish Mr. Kornick nothing but the best. At the discussion, at the workshop meeting, I had asked Julia, worst-case scenario is, you know, the failure, and going along with what trustee Laudner had discussed. So that's covered. I'm definitely for option two. It's a little bit more money, but the looping of the water main from Beach to Newberry makes sense, and also this way, we only have to do it once. We don't have to dig it up and disturb the ground. So I'm for it, and I wish Mr. Kornick nothing but the best, and hopefully he's a pioneer and people follow his, his lead. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Sheehan. I do agree also on Jason, Mr. Kornick, you're the leader down there on 31st Street. This is going to bring other businesses to our area with your success. This is what the administrative staff and the board envisioned when we met for strategic planning, and I'll never forget, as I mentioned at the work session, Julia's, close your eyes, look at, walking down 31st Street, what do you envision? And it's coming to fruition. So we want to wish you the best of luck, be successful. We're going to attract other businesses, and it makes sense to do what the board has recommended. So with that, any other comments? Amanda, call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Trustee Casera.
Point of order, Mr.?
Oh, yes, Trustee Rocco.
I, I, maybe I missed it, but I don't think the memorandum was just that, the memorandum for the commercial revitalization, did I miss that? I don't know if that was read.
Oh.
Yes, there's a report.
I am sorry. Trustee Casera, did you have a monthly report?
Just because I think it's so that people know for the work session, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Trustee Rocco. Village staff is working with a prospective restaurateur to negotiate the terms of a tax increment financing redevelopment agreement. We anticipate a draft of the agreement will be presented to the village board for consideration at December 12th work session meeting. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Casera, and thank you, Trustee Rocco. See, we have a sharp board up here, I'll tell you that. Okay, other reports, village clerk?
I have nothing to report, Mr. President.
Our village treasurer?
No reports, Mr. President.
Our village engineer?
No reports, Mr. President.
And our village attorney?
No report, Mr. President.
Motion to approve committee and collectors' reports?
Shall move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. I have two items that I would just like to bring forward. One is that Chief Julie and I met with residents on One is that Chief, Julie and I met with residents on Newberry, the 1000 block of Newberry this past Tuesday, was held at Cheryl Peterson's house. Everything went well. They had, you know, concerns again about safety and parking and, and respectfully, Julie and Chief did an excellent job in allaying those fears and all the progress that the village is making to ensure safety and parking in that area. The second item I have is with the, I'd like the board to consider discussion maybe at the work session or to formulate discussion. With the, with the investment that Mr. Kornick is making in the future of expansion and other business coming to 31st Street, I would like to see the board after discussion with Julia to think about parking issues down there and what we can do as a village to help stimulate some parking areas, create some parking areas. For example, Julie and staff had come up with a proposal that on Beach, the, the western side of Beach across from the Donahue's office and the parking lot on the corner there, it's grass area now that is owned by us and, and maybe convert that into parking spots. But with, with, with what's going on down there and the future of it, I think it would, again, I'd like to see the board have maybe a vision of what the future may hold and what we can do to help create a situation where, you know, people come up to us saying, well, what are you going to do? More businesses are coming up. Where's the parking going to be? That maybe we could have an answer for them or at least say, you know, we've looked at it and this is what our future holds for us as money comes in from the BDD and, and TIF. I don't know which committee, I think Julie and Emily were going to discuss and maybe come up with which committee this would best be in the laps of. So I'd just like the board to consider that and maybe we can discuss it at the next meeting and, and the future of, of that area since we are going to see new businesses come in with the success of Jason's restaurant. And if nobody has seen the video of Jason's restaurant, is it on YouTube? It is fabulous. It's, it's state-of-the-art. It's like Star Wars. But it's really, it's really neat to see. And again, as I told Jason the other day, my wife loved when the donuts came on. So we're all anticipating great food and, and great enjoyment had by all there. That's all that I have. Any, well, first, public participation of non-agenda-related items? Trustee Sheen?
Thank you. Jason, can I ask where the public might be able to find this video that's out there?
Yeah, I think it's on, so we have a Facebook page. It's out there, which is Project Godfrey. And then I think it's on YouTube, Project Godfrey. I think it's on there, the marketing company put it on there also on YouTube.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Sheen. Public participation, non-agenda-related items? Anyone care to address the board? Okay, any new business? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.